Good evening. Welcome to the August 29 regular meeting of the Ryanbeck Central District. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes from our previous meeting? Second, any discussion, corrections? Okay. Okay, that motion passes. We have time for public comment, but seeing as we have no public, we'll move on with our agenda. Reports and discussions, board committee reports, long-range planning.
So, it was the first time the committee had met just as a committee and not with any guests, so we were racing through a lot of things, as you can see. First thing we talked about was the opportunity to set up some sort of citizens advisory committee, given community interest in this process. We already have a district policy, number 12 tenets in your packets, that allows for the use of these kinds of committees, but we feel that it's critical to know what we're asking people to do. So, we will develop a charter, a charge for them, and at our next board meeting, bring it to the board for full approval before we move ahead with that. And we're going to try to set it up like the facilities task force, so that we have set dates for meetings and a set agenda, so that we can bring people in and they really know what is being asked. The timing on that will probably be sort of later in September, after we get out our postcard, our informational postcard about the long-range planning process. That just, it seemed like a better time to do it, so that non-school parents would understand that there was a process going on as well. At our meeting on the 31st, we'll create that language as well. We then turned to the idea about choosing Ryanbeck versus Redhook schools, and why families choose one or the other, new families coming into the area, or families who are here and are switching. Obviously, housing is something we have no control over, the price of housing, but we're really interested in understanding the educational reasons that people may make a choice like Redhook versus Ryanbeck. So, we want to engage with realtors in the area who work with new families, who are talking to their clients and understanding what they're looking for in terms of schooling if they've got school-aged children. In terms of a general communications plan, we're going to work on the information postcard. We're going to, like with school start time, we're going to have very targeted survey questions that are one to three questions that people can answer in five minutes, so that we try to generate more response. We'll send out a number of them, but we have to sort of put together questions to ask, things we're really keen to know from our community. The listening sessions that we've talked about in the past are going to mirror our copy with the board. We'll do a morning and an evening session, so we can try to get as many people here as possible. We have to determine those dates. We'll do the Realtor outreach, and, you know, as we think of other things, as our colleagues think of things that we might consider, we'll add those to the next, and the communications committee will be helping. That's us. Further administrative meetings that we're going to be having, later in the fall, we'll have Ed Davenport and John Kennitzer come back, once we've sort of developed. Athletics, and sort of the philosophy around our sports offerings, and is a merger better than, you know, just waiting for a team to die out for lack of interest, and what does that do to the Ryanbeck school teams? So, we want to get his perspective on that. We'll talk to Sheldon Teeter about our facilities needs and what we're looking forward to, and we'll invite Steve Johnson and Marvin Krebs to talk about curricular impacts and technology suggestions for the future. What can we use with technology that we don't already? And then further down the road, we'll try to poll our non-instructional staff, invite them to come talk to us about things that are not education-related specifically. We also want to learn more about shared services with other districts. Are there examples we can look to? We need to start doing that research. We talked again about the idea of state mandated education, what we absolutely are required to provide in this district, and if we can get that, a really good understanding of what we have to give, provide for our students in special ed, athletics, transportation, facilities, technology, food service, you know, whether we have a middle school, high school configuration, or a junior high, what we absolutely have to provide, and then we know what we can talk about in terms of, okay, so we choose to provide this group of things, why have we made those choices, and, you know, should we continue with those choices? We also threw out the idea about parental fees for services, athletic uniforms, things like that, but it limits equity of access to those kinds of things, so we really need to understand that before we even consider it. Tom and Joe were describing a district-wide organizational chart of personnel. It was created a number of years ago. It needs updating, so they're going to do that, and then break it down further into building-level organizational charting, so that we can see how, when, and where our staff is deployed. Tom also did a lot of work on our statistical neighbors, which we've been talking about. He's identified 23 districts across the state who have similar enrollment and combined wealth ratios. His net was a combined wealth ratio of 1 and 1/4 to 3. Ryanbeck is 2. We may tighten that up a little bit, depending on what we find out, in terms of special ed expenditures and special ed populations served in these districts, but we're going to start looking at what they provide, how they do it. Are they, are they as good as Ryanbeck? Should we emulate anything they do? But how are they managing the low population? ASBO, the School Business Official Association that Tom is affiliated with, has been on vacation this summer, so in the fall, when they get back, he's going to continue his review of long-range planning software. And at our next meeting, also, we're going to start developing a task list for our standing committees, so that we can get everybody sort of working toward this major goal of ours this year. So, if anybody has any ideas, please, please share. We're happy to get suggestions. We've got a meeting on the 31st with, you know, more development of ideas. Emily Davidson is going to come on the 13th, and then on the 25th, we have another meeting set up, and we'll figure out what we're going to fill our time with.
Just one point of clarification on the section of the report dealing with state mandates and parental fees for services. It is an equity issue, and for that reason, it's not allowed in New York State. I mean, other states, Massachusetts is one that allows pay-for-play, but not in New York State. So, I just want everybody to be aware of that. It's not, I wouldn't want anybody to hear this on hand and assume that that is an option for us. That said, you should know that some school districts across the state do that. They're not supposed to. I didn't name any names, but we follow the law commissioners' regulations, so we do not do that. Anyway, just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, you said you were going to be following up with families that have moved out of the district?
We haven't targeted that specifically, but yeah, we, a couple of years ago, we tried to do that research. It's hard to find those people that we'll actually share. We would love to have that information. So, yeah, if there are families who have moved up to Redhook, and we can identify who they are, I'd love to be able to poll them and find out what, you know, what caused them to move, what, you know, what specifically. And if it was because they were just priced out of Ryanbeck, then there's nothing we can do about that, but if it's more about programs offered and things like that, that's important for us to understand.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay. Personnel committee.
That's something that should happen in the executive session due to the nature of negotiations that a personnel committee is involved with right now.
Curriculum, I'm the reporter on that. We met yesterday, and we looked at the document that is in your packet, the computer science curriculum, technology exploration computer science curriculum for the middle school, and Marvin Krebs spoke to the question, what is different about this curriculum from the draft document we were looking at roughly this time last year? So, in the minutes, we've called out a couple of pages and passages that we looked at together in the committee, and some telling shifts having to do with the allocation of time, in the planning across weeks of units. So, for instance, on page 32, digital, beginning of page 32, which is the curriculum as opposed to the preparatory material, we can see that digital citizenship, which had previously played a very large part in all three grades, has been reallocated. There's still a lot of emphasis on digital citizenship in sixth grade. Marvin talked about some of the reasons for that, with students entering the middle school, how important that transitional period is, and the, in his professional judgment, the importance of front-loading, a lot of that material in grade six. Keyboarding has been significantly reduced, in contrast to the previous document. Productivity units are occupying more space in the curriculum. Some of the standards that had been called out in the first version have now been reduced, and to emphasize further on what Marvin refers to as the power standards, and he talked us through the appendix, which lists project ideas, use cases, which, as he points out, this is a floor rather than a ceiling, in terms of how integration could take place for project-based learning. The board tonight is being asked to approve the curriculum, which is only part of the document, the second part of the document. The first half of the document, as I've already said, is a preface. It's meant to provide teachers and others with guidance on the implementation of the curriculum, but also the context for the development of the curriculum. And he did try to draw our attention to places in that preface where questions, many questions were collected, for instance, right from the board itself, funneled through the curriculum committee, back to those who were writing the curriculum along with Mr. Krebs, and he talked about how the preface is in some way attempting to speak to some of those concerns. We may choose to endorse that, but that's not really what we're being asked to approve or adopt tonight. As it states in the minutes, Ryanbeck makes the decision, in this case as all cases, not simply to take wholesale a curriculum that's developed by some outside provider. The choice in Ryanbeck has been to develop our own curriculum, being guided by standards, professional judgment of our educators and of our director of curriculum. There are no New York State standards for technology, so guidance is being drawn from the common core standards in other areas, but also in particular ISTI standards. ISTI stands for the International Society for Technology and Education, and the website is provided here. For those who aren't familiar with this organization, it's really well worth investigating their role in K-12 education and the kind of guidance that they're offering us in terms of our own curriculum. Marvin stressed that this is an organic document. Clearly, there will be review and revision that will take place through his office, in consultation with the teachers who are teaching the curriculum, but board approval is really significant, as he argued to us yesterday, because it signals a commitment, an ongoing commitment to progress in this area in the district. It's important to send that signal out into our community, to our families, and to our professional staff. He drew an analogy to the process of rolling out Project Lead the Way in the district, which is, I think, for those of us who kind of watched that over the years, it happened in certain parts of the school, certain grades, when there was opportunity to build. This was, of course, accomplished with the incredible support of the Ryanbeck Science Foundation, and so he draws an analogy between thinking about the school as a whole, and then looking at the parts of the curriculum that are being implemented in different grade It's been two years since we had an initial assessment of the skills students are coming with into the middle school, and of course, we're going to need to look at that again to get a sense of how changes in chancellor are impacting the students who are coming up into the middle school. Marvin's sense is that it still remains uneven. Different students are arriving in the middle school with different levels of confidence and skill. How that will change is something important for us to monitor and to chart. We also talked about how integration of technology curricula across all the grades, and really assessing where we are in setting goals for ourselves as a district, for ourselves as a district and as a board, is, of course, part of our board goal, our three board goals for this year. So, toward that end, we talked in the committee about making this actually our leading agenda item moving forward, with requests for regular check-ins with administrators, getting reports, rather, you know, sort of granular reports on what they see happening with the implementation of the curriculum, and encouraging the sharing out of those classrooms of projects that are underway, so we can have a sense, and the community can have a sense, of what's happening with moving forward on this, on this curricular goal. Questions?
I have two questions. First one is, so, you know, this just being looked at yesterday and possibly approved today, is this going to be implemented, followed, starting next week, or this be?
The board approves it tonight, yeah.
Okay. And the second question is, so is it the committee's recommendation that we approve this?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, that wasn't, I wasn't explicitly, yes, Lori. No, because we really talked through why it would be significant, what, you know, if we delay and wait and go through another round of requested revisions, that, it seemed to us that the trade-off there was not one we wanted to make, right? But we, it's more important to adopt and then work with and assess what we have going on in our classrooms, in our schools, with this document.
So, this is kind of like the CDEP, at one point, where you're kind of like approving it, knowing that it's still going to be a?
Yes.
Well, maybe, it may be. You know, there are probably units that are going to work solidly, but, you know, as with any curriculum, teachers figure out, eh, it didn't really work out quite the way I thought, so.
I'm just using a less charged analogy in the world of curriculum development. Over the last couple of years, we've had our high school English teachers develop curriculum, and, you know, there were iterations of it, and we, again, we wanted to get it going with the idea that they would, they would test drive it for a year, and if there were things they wanted to change, either in terms of different pieces of literature or whatever, they would come back tomorrow, and that's the other point that we wanted to make, not only about this, but it was really a general conversation about the curriculum development process, is that the curriculum doesn't change by the whim or the decision of a particular teacher or teachers. I mean, that process has to flow back through our director of curriculum and probably involve some additional curriculum work, same way it did with our English teachers. They did it actually in two, in two stages, so this would follow the same model.
Is that process kind of like, you know, unit by unit? They might go back to them and say, like, this didn't really work, or is it like a mid-year, end-of-the-year type thing? Like, were they really evaluated?
It could be any of those.
Depends on them.
And he also suggested that, of course, that perfect time after the first year to do additional curriculum work would be in the summer, with his support and guidance, so. I think Jaclyn, and then you guys, yes?
This may be a bigger question than for now, but I know there's currently a discussion going on on Facebook, which some of you may have seen, talking about the computer curriculum and questions about it, and I didn't weigh in because I didn't see this on the website yet, figuring since it hadn't been approved.
That's right.
But could somebody provide background as to, how is this different from what we have now? Not just from what the draft was a year ago, but what, I mean, there are a lot of elements I recognize already from, you know, having a recent graduate of middle school activities that have already happened. So, what, what is new and different? Did we have a plan before? So, for the viewers at home.
Do you want to speak to this?
Sure. We had no board-approved technology curriculum before, perhaps tonight. There are lots of similar elements. I think you'll see that because this was a draft a year ago, that there are many similar elements. I think most similar between draft and what's here is the eighth-grade curriculum, and I think there has been more work done on the earlier grades, and sort of how things like digital citizenship are going to be addressed without making it lecture, but how do we make it part of their real-world experience? So, a lot of the commentary that was provided to Marvin and the developers of the curriculum was making it real-life for them. If you just sit there and say, this is bad because, they don't care. You know, they're on their phones all the time, and they're proficient as far as they know, but really, they couldn't tell you, many of them can't tell you how it works or why. So, because we're pushing more of the productivity, being able to use Excel, and being able to use Microsoft Word to set up a letter to write to somebody, things like that, will be useful to them, not only, you know, currently, if they're working on a project, but in high school, when they're writing letters, or, you know, introductions, when they're in college, things like that. There is also, what's not in the minutes, there is a stronger focus on programming now, too, beginning in sixth grade, so those units will be much beefier than they have been previously. So, we think that's a really great thing, because there seems to be more and more of a push to get coding and programming into middle school grades. The other thing, Deirdre was talking about, Project Lead the Way, starting in a place, it started in the middle school, and it grew up into the high school with two electives, and it grew down into the elementary school with launch. So, the launch programs are actually adding units that have more productivity in it as well. So, as things get stronger in the elementary school, this will, by necessity, have to change, because kids are going to actually know more when they get to the middle school. And everybody's sort of clear about that, that, you know, we have to stay on top of this, so that we meet the need of the kids coming in, and also think about what they're going to need moving up into the high school as well.
Steve, you were?
Yeah, but that was the two things that I noticed going through here, was the productivity enhancements and the programming, which I think is great and a big improvement, so I'm glad to see that. A question really on kind of the oversight of the new curriculum, how is it going to be observed, monitored, and assessed, and will Lori Keating herself be involved in any three of those things?
That's a good question. We didn't talk about the ongoing role of Lori Keating.
I think what we, what we talked about, one of the things we talked about in terms of a strategy, not necessarily the only strategy, but that given, assuming the board approves this tonight, and we're ready to roll this out next, starting next week, that there are opportunities for both Marvin as the director of curriculum, John Kennitzer as the building principal, of course, and Steve Jensen as the director of technology, to be sampling what's going on with this new curriculum. We didn't talk about Lori Keating, but that's a great idea, and I mean, I got it that down already. There's no reason I can think of why we may not have her stop by, obviously. We want her to come out and be involved, but that's a great idea. I'm meeting with Marvin and John and Steve on Thursday morning to discuss the rollout of this, again, assuming it's approved by the board tonight.
So, I think there's still some budget money from the original grant, if I'm not mistaken, that could be put towards?
That will have to check then, huh?
That's great. One appropriate allocation, right? Yeah. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
And, you know, to the point you're raising, Jaclyn, we did talk about the fact that now there is a curriculum, if there's a curriculum document, how do we share this kind of material with interested parents? I think this is true in English, it's true in, you know, computer science, it's true in all fields, and, you know, what I would hope is maybe in communications, you could talk also about ways of drawing people's attention to these documents, making it user-friendly for them to get access on the district website, to look at them themselves, and, I mean, because really, it's compelling to read, and no one really had a document to explain what was happening.
Even open house would be a good opportunity to kind of talk about it.
That's a really good idea. Yeah. Diane?
I was going to say open house.
Open house. Speaking of which, although, I mean, that's like other, I was thinking that maybe that's other, but for new board members, we do make a policy of trying to have a board member at every open house, and be prepared to greet and say a few words at that meeting, so we'll be sending out invitations?
Yeah, maybe we could talk about that a little bit as we work our way down our agenda here, but I'm glad you worked that up, too.
So, are we, any other questions about this?
The high school component, I mean, I know that this is focusing on the middle school, and some of the more advanced skills were laid out as gaining mastery in the high school. Is that an expectation for all students, because it will be integrated into other fields, you know, in English and math and science, or are those skills that will be gained in computer electives?
In the high school.
In the high school.
So, we started to talk about the implications of this for the high school curriculum, we haven't gotten into?
And in that preparatory material, that chart where, you know, you see mastery and can do it with help, and that's actually pulled from the ISTI website. That's what kids should be able to do. Other than the AP computer science elective that we're just rolling out this year, we don't have a formal computer science curriculum in high school, yet. You know, there needs to be.
But, I mean, if we, if we use, I'm not saying we should or shouldn't, but if we use the Project Lead the Way as a model, we built it to address every child in the middle school, which this curriculum will, and then when Project Lead the Way manifests itself at the high school level, it's not for every kid. And I think there are a lot of reasons for that, and not that you can't integrate perhaps more broadly with technology than you could with pre-engineering skills, but the model was to then specialize at the high school with a number of the pre-engineering courses that we rolled out, and the one we're rolling out this fall, that we sent, I'm blanking on the name, Justin Randall, thank you. Thank you. I was ping-ponging between Jason and Justin, thank you. We trained him, we're going to be offering that course, and more things may grow out of that, depending on, I mean, we used to have a number of programming courses. They went, they went by the wayside because kids weren't signing up for them. This may generate more interest than we've had in the recent past, and going to the other end, the elementary end, the intention is to do similar to what we did with Project Lead the Way at the elementary level, is that every kid will be exposed to these skills as well, but we've got to kind of back-design it from the middle school and up-design it at the high school level, but it will probably look differently at those levels. I don't, again, don't quote me, and if there's great interest and room in the schedule and all those other considerations, I don't anticipate that every kid will be taking an advanced programming course in high school, but hopefully, we have a critical mass of kids who are interested in that, that we can justify floating multiple courses in those areas. But again, that's, I'm just kind of pie in the sky at it at this point. We'll have to see how it, how it rolls out.
Yeah, but what this is creating is a pipeline of kids who actually have some skills, right? So, build it, they will come. So, that's sort of where we are. That's what happened with Project Lead the Way, and it's been incredibly successful. So, I think, hopefully, this will be the beginning of a more robust exposure to technology, and it's as a tool, right? You know, because everybody needs technology as a tool today, so we want our kids to be able to know how to do it, use it.
Thank you. Okay. So I think that's it for reports. Oh, so our next order of business is the NISBA Board Officer Leadership Training Report. Mark, do you want to say anything about what we experienced in Latham?
Sounds life-changing.
Look how I feel about it.
So, half of the program was about reading the Emotionally Intelligent Word, so there's quite a lengthy presentation on that. Not sure how the people who were there actually bought into that whole thing, I'm not sure I was convinced that what they were talking about was really valid, but other parts of the program were very educational, I thought. We did, I don't know if you've heard, Deirdre and I mentioning earlier, that they had a mock board meeting, which was led by several other participants playing roles around the board table, you know, you can imagine, kind of funny roles that were played around the board table. But you learn about ways, other, you know, of course, there's a critique afterwards about, you know, what the people did correctly, did wrong, et cetera. And you learn about how other boards do things in the real-world, and I felt much more confident coming out of it that we actually do things pretty well here in Reinbeck, so that's, I guess...
There's no place like home. Yeah. I guess one of the interesting, I'll pass around one of the handouts they gave us about the World Economic Forum identifying emotional intelligence as like one of the key attributes for 21st century success, and actually, one of the things that the presenters shared with us, and I did actually read up a little bit on it afterwards, is many school districts are adopting some of this language with their students around drawing awareness to and consciousness of one's own state of emotion, right? Which sounds sort of self-evident, but actually, when we listen to people at the conference, many said, "I don't think I have any emotions when I'm in board meetings," and we sort of scratched our heads. So, apparently, there are people who are in denial about having emotions during board meetings, and terrible things happen as a result.
You mean, aren't emotions, other than anger and...
Yeah, exactly. So, but it does appear to be something that's impacting the way people think about education and teaching children to become aware of their own emotional state, become more mindful of it, and therefore not subjected to it, right? That in a sense, they can recognize an emotion and name it and not be controlled by it. So, that was an interesting takeaway, and it was also interesting to learn that this is a kind of language that is finding its way into the discourse around education generally.
And perhaps not all that disconnected from one of our board goals for the year.
Which is social motion.
Yeah.
Well-being for our students, so we have materials to share with you, we can pass it around, but...
You can give it to me, too, and I can scan it and send it to you guys. I'm killing a bunch of trees.
Among some of the stranger things we learned is that there are boards that describe themselves as sometimes having terribly long meetings of 90 minutes. Wow. Very interesting, yes.
What district is that?
Exactly, exactly. We don't mention any names. What happens in Latham stays in Latham. But it was interesting in a kind of a broader sense in terms of hearing about how committees work, and that's actually where the Citizens Advisory Committee idea came back to us and to the Long Range Planning Group, was to sort of hear how those are formed in other districts. So, it was eye-opening to see the range of practices in school boards across New York State and to get a sense of how ours functions in relationship to it. So we are grateful to have had the opportunity, and it is definitely worthwhile.
Thanks for coming.
Moving along, we have to designate a delegate and an alternate to the 2017 NISBA Conference and Convention.
You know what, I would suggest asking Mark to address that role, as he's served in that role in prior years, just so everybody understands what that involves. Obviously, not all of you are attending, so you're not going to be serving one of those roles if you're not there, but four of you are, so I'll let you guys take over that.
Okay, so the voting delegate really is our representative to the voting meeting at the convention. You were given earlier tonight the proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions booklet, so there's a number of, I have to look to see how many there are, but there's a number of legislative resolutions, I don't know if I can reach, 30 resolutions. These are all submitted by other boards in New York State, to NISBA about what the NISBA legislative agenda should be for the next 53 years. Once a resolution is passed at the convention, it stays on the NISBA legislative agenda for three years unless it is voted to be continued three years down the road at a convention. So, you know, if you read through these, some of them are sunsetting this year, which means if they're not approved to be extended, then they'll go away. There are also some bylaw amendments to the NISBA bylaws. There's actually one in here, which I won't start discussion about this tonight because it could be lengthy, but there's one resolution to amend the bylaws that was voted down last year, so it's back in the proposals for bylaw amendments this year. So let me discuss it later, I can kind of fill you in on that. So anyway, the voting delegate is responsible for bringing our feelings about these resolutions to the meeting and voting accordingly. You know, you get an opportunity to make comment to the rest of the delegates about how your board feels. You know, there's a time for people to make comments, there's time for rebuttal to the comments, there's times, there's an opportunity to amend the resolutions, and that's what the delegate is there for. It's kind of a pretty complicated process. There is a, at the NISBA conference, there's a meeting of the delegates so that they can go over all the rules and parliamentary rules so that the meeting runs smoothly. There is a rule that there has to be a quorum, and once the quorum is not there anymore, because people leave throughout the meeting as the meeting drags on, once the quorum is not there anymore, then the meeting ends. So, normally, it lasts a couple, two or three hours, I think, until the quorum ends. I think last year, we got through most of the items that were on the agenda, but I think the last two may not, a couple of them may not have gotten voted on, so that's what happens.
So, is there, there's a deadline by which we have to make our designation, correct?
Yeah. Whitney, do you remember what that is? It might even be in the, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I'm not trying to, but there's an action item on this agenda tonight to designate such, and, yeah, 6.7, and I think under 6.7, there is a mailer or an emailer that we got...
Oh, in the...
Yeah, in your pocket.
I'm asking because there have been, the last couple of years, Mark, you've gone, but there, I think in the first part of my tenure, we didn't send a delegate because there were no issues in the bylaws and resolutions that we cared so much about, so can we have another meeting so we can discuss these?
Once people have a chance to read them.
Yeah, and then determine, maybe, Mark, maybe you've read them, so you know...
I was just saying, I kind of read through them, and there's really nothing that I would object to as far as the resolutions go. The bylaw amendments, you know, we may need to have some discussion about that. I mean, like I said, there's one proposed amendment that was in the agenda last year and was voted down, so I can explain that, and we have a discussion about it.
Can you call our attention to that in the table of contents, just so we read that here, please?
Yes.
Page seven?
I have it highlighted.
Is it page seven?
So it's Amendment A, which is very first amendment.
Proposed bylaw Amendment A?
Yes.
Okay. So we might want to make time to discuss this next...
So, just for the new board members that are here, you know, each one of these resolutions and amendments, there's a rationale presented as to why the amendment, why it's there, and, you know, there's opportunity for, you know, at the actual meeting, for people to state their opinion, pro or con, and then there's, you know, plenty of opportunity for member school boards to weigh in on this.
I would say that in past years, when advocacy has been one of our stated goals, there have been years where at the convention, you know, debates have taken place around these resolutions that were very much speaking to the concerns around testing, around unfunded mandates, about many of the issues that we struggle with individually at the local level, and NISBA is our sort of voice, often in terms of trying to represent the larger totality of school boards in New York State. So, we should review these and see, you know, how hard it is to...
Yes, and I believe at the October Dutchess County School Board Association meeting, there will be a discussion about these resolutions, as I recall, that's from the preliminary agenda for the year. Normally, they have someone who is on the resolutions committee come in and speak about why the resolutions are there and what the rationale is and what people's opinion kept in up to this point. So, anybody's interested in that, it'll be the first Thursday of October.
So do you think that we have the time, Joe, to wait to...
Yeah, I doubt they would need it before September 12th.
So let's aim to...
I think there's plenty of time to do that.
Come to some decision.
I'll just say that I'm willing to be the delegate if, you know, people want to nominate me, that's fine, you know, otherwise, somebody else can fight over it. If you're really interested, you're welcome.
Who are the people who are going?
The four of us.
The four of us, okay.
Does it make sense to nominate someone if we decide...
If you don't want to go ultimately?
Well, it's really, I mean, there's no cost. You know, you designate a delegate and an alternate who could sit in. If the delegate can't be there, I don't know that our alternate has ever had anything to do.
Yeah, so if, for example, if the delegate needs to step out of the room, take a call or, you know, do something like that, they can...
Call the alternate.
Give the paddle to the alternate, and they can go inside and sit down and vote, you know, while the meeting's going on, and then they can switch later on or whatever.
If you don't appoint someone, you can't go.
Right.
Yeah, so we may as well know.
And if you do appoint somebody, they're not forced to go. I mean, if we decide at some point, you know what, we appointed somebody, but there isn't anything we care that much about to be involved, and the delegate doesn't, it's not like you're mandated to have somebody sitting there, but you're right. If you don't name somebody, then you can't have a voice at the table.
And if you're willing to do it.
And it's a quorum of the initial people who've entered the room, right?
Right. The regulations, and I can't remember the specifics, but there has to be a certain number of delegates in the room to have a quorum, and I can't remember what the, it's a percentage of the number of school boards in the state that are members of NISBA. And I don't know what, I don't remember what the percentage is, but once that number, once there isn't that number in the room, then the meeting automatically ends by regulation or whatever. I would do anything to help.
Well, then, my sense is maybe we should go ahead and...
Mark, you're willing to do it, that would be...
Is there anyone who'd like to be the alternate?
I have a three-headed coin, I'll have to flip. Somebody really should in case he has to leave the room.
So, Joe, you put names in the hat.
I'm willing to be the alternate.
There you go.
Our board leadership steps up.
We don't need to go to the coin toss.
So you have to spend the morning role-playing?
Yeah, just you're suddenly an alternate.
You have to wait till you get done before you can leave. We can go walk a shower.
Actually, sometimes they put some of the best sessions during the business meeting, it always really...
By the way, they do have a gal, anybody wants to sit and watch.
Help us. No, Mark, no! Mark, we didn't agree on that. All right, so I'm happy we came to a successful resolution on that. Good news.
Mark said he'd be all right.
I'm sorry. You are Mr. Good News.
Schools almost started, that's good news.
It's very good news, yes.
The Science Foundation is doing their Discovery Festival in October.
Yes, I saw it on the district calendar. What's the theme?
I think it's a 10th year anniversary kind of...
Best of.
Best of.
Best of.
Yeah.
So this is a 10-year anniversary.
Some really cool medical stuff in the works, though, so stay tuned for more info.
That's great. Old business?
Yeah, I have a couple. Due to some questions from some of you, I asked Tom to address the issue of transportation generally, just as we get ready to start a new school year, and also specifically, some of the changes that he's made over the summer to address some of the concerns that were raised over Chancellor about the end-of-day buses as a result of, you know, the change in the start-and-end time, so Tom will let you appreciate the board on that.
Total Transportation's our home-to-school bus company. They received our transportation route sheets about two weeks ago. All but two of the bus drivers have ridden, wrote the routes and asked, gave suggestions to change some things, and those have been implemented. The last two who haven't done it, they're on vacation right now, but they are running basically the same route as last year, so this would be their third year, actually, of running these routes, so, but they'll be doing that on Tuesday before the start of school, just to see if there's anything. So that looks really good as far as the bus drivers knowing the routes, all the drivers are coming back, so that's very helpful. In addition to that, we worked a lot over the summertime to ensure that the buses would get back to Chancellor earlier. Now, the times I'm suggesting right now are the dates, if we had to drop every single kid off, and we know that's not the case. These numbers are about 70 minutes earlier, I mean, they're all scheduled to come in by 3:25. We do have one issue with bus number 12, that does the back routes, so we're looking...
Sorry, 3:25?
No, yeah, 3:25.
It's 10 minutes early.
10 minutes earlier than they were coming in last year, or seven to eight minutes before they were scheduled to come in. So we did a lot of work on Route 1 and Route 3, which were giving us some problems through the end of the year to make sure they're back in time. Took a lot of the front-load off of their buses, so they're going straight out, all the way out Slate Quarry. They don't have any responsibilities near 9G, where they did last year. But Route 12 was a little problem, that's our backroads bus, and we have more kids popped up on the backroads.
It's Kansas Road and...
All the dirt roads.
All the dirt roads.
It's a small bus.
One-way dirt road.
It's a small bus.
Yeah, yeah, so we're actually going to start reaching out to some of the parents. We want to identify the seniors on that route, just to give them a call to find out if they're driving or not driving, how that is. Always the bus will be there, but if we know we don't have to go down certain roads or don't have to pick up at certain places, it will help us out. So that's been helpful. So that's really the only sticking point that we see right now. We have some other things that we can fall back on, and that's actually using John DeFiell also to take some of our kids home. We don't know yet, we're trying to see if this works out first before we bring John DeFiell Transportation in for that. So, all the routes have been set up, I know that some of the parents are now just being contacted now that we got the whole... I know that some of the parents are now just being contacted now that we got the home-to-school. So they've all, all those letters have been sent out. It went in two waves. I think the elementary building went one day, and this school, I think, went out yesterday. Unfortunately, I've been on vacation getting my daughter back to school, so I haven't really been around, but I know everything is out now. So that's good. And then, along with the tax bills, the village will be out tomorrow. Kind of held off on them. People are already paying because they're going online and seeing the tax announcements. They're sending it there already. They should be sending it to a P.O. box in Buffalo now, just like the village and the town do. But they don't know that yet because they haven't received their bill. But that's okay. We accept it here anyways. It's not a big deal. So things are working along really well with that one. So I'm looking forward to seeing how it all works. We're actually having one other thing that we're thinking about, putting the buses in a different order. Especially Bus 12. I might get 12 out first, and then one coming out to you. So I think we resolve that issue in Bus 1. It will be the second bus out. But it's the kids, they're all... Well, 12's at the end of the line. No, no, it's at the beginning of the line, and the rest of it goes right. No, it will be a big change. It's too late. So we're really confident this will run a lot better. I can't guarantee until we get the first few days. I mean, the first few days are always going to be a little bit an issue. Also, kindergarten will be going home right away. They've got half-days for them for the first five days. So that might cause a little bit of extra time on the way home, but that has nothing to do with getting the buses to Chancellor. But I think the first couple of days, it takes a little bit longer to get the kids on the buses. Once they get the routine, they're done in three, four minutes, and they're out. But the first couple of days may be a little bit longer. So it does take a little bit longer to get them home. But also, there's a lot more athletes now, so you don't have to stop everywhere. That's the other good thing, too.
If we could get an update from you, Tom, at the next meeting, that would be great, just to see...
Yes.
Yep, yep. See what issues we have and how we're addressing them.
Or just check my McBombs and Dads.
Yes, I try not to look on the first day, but I get sucked in.
And Steve, that's a good point. It is only one side from a handful of people, so we'll give you an update. I mean, we have a vested interest in making this work, both generally speaking, as well as with the start time schedule. And time has made some significant changes. And yeah, it's always slower the first couple of days. But it should only be a few days. It shouldn't be a few months like we had once upon a time, so...
So there are also a change that we wanted to do with the bells at Chancellor at the end of day? To make them more...
I've already mentioned that to Mr. King. I don't think that's a big deal, and better to make at the beginning of the year before they start binging at a different time.
Because I hear them chirping early, so I know they're going on again.
Yeah.
Practicing the bells.
Would you check the time so we know?
I don't know what the right time is.
So could we also ask just for a sense of how that's going, the new bell time?
The dismissal in general.
Yeah, yeah. Because we do, I do feel that we want to be responsive to the feedback that came to us. And it really is the final piece of this project of the school start time, so it'd be great for us to know. Yeah.
I think it's important for parents to just give it a couple of days. But it's important for them to let the office know if there is issues. I mean, because they don't know if someone doesn't tell them there's an issue.
Also, on the first...
Patience in the beginning, because it does take a few days to work out the things.
I mean, every year, no matter who the bus company is.
Especially the first day, there's lots of pictures taken. So is the process now to get it...
Yeah, the pictures, right.
But it looks, they're very confident that this will run better than last year.
Well, and it's nice to have consistency amongst the bus drivers.
Yeah, that's great.
That's huge.
And thank you, Tom, for your tireless efforts to...
A lot goes to Sue, too. She worked hard.
Yeah, to Sue, yes.
She came up with a lot of the ideas and worked it. Got it all rounded.
That's great. Well, please thank her.
And we did add Bus 11 to the elementary school also. That is going to help out the Rhine Cliff up to Red Hook area, splitting that up. Be some happier parents on that side.
Efficiency in those...
Shorter rides.
Excellent. That's great.
But shortened time.
Shortened time, shortened time. Not in distance, but in time. Did we have any other old business?
Yes, I have one other item I asked Tom to speak to, at least in general terms, because it still is not, it's not the end of summer yet. But I asked, I asked him, although it felt like it today, I asked him to address the issue of enrollment. Yeah, you know, part of the issue that goes into this enrollment and the bus routing was the high school is exactly where we expected it to be. They graduated about 100 kids, and they got low 80s coming up into their schools. So they, you know, a little bit lower. But an area that actually, we did have a school that increased in size. And that is the middle school.
Really?
The middle school added 15 kids to their roster.
Wow, that's great.
So 15, and I don't know exactly, we haven't figured out, you know, is it 10 new kids in three, you know, in a grade level? Because it was grade seven and grade eight. Grade six, zero increase. Grade seven, I think, got seven new kids, and grade eight got eight new kids. That's a bit unusual, because usually you see maybe a pickup in ninth grade as kids and middle school programs and private and parochial schools. But we didn't see anything there. We saw that in the middle school. So actually, I think just about all three of the middle school grades are in the 80s, low to mid 80s. So an uptick there. So, and that created more kids to take home, too, than we didn't think we had. And kids popped up in some different places that haven't happened before, that's for sure. And the elementary school, right on, right on. I think right now, 60 or 61. I think they got 60 officially. They know of another kid who's trying to register at this time, so I think right now it's 61. Entering kindergarten. So that pretty much is on target. A couple gains, losses in the other grades, but nothing more than one or two.
Tom, just to clarify my mind, I guess. So you're saying we have 15 more kids than we had last year in the middle school?
No.
Or just 15 new kids?
Fifteen, at least 15 new kids.
So middle school enrollment is still, is it less than last year?
No, it's actually...
15 kids more.
Well, 15 more.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll have to take a look exactly. You know, once starting day is here, I'll run a school. So I can actually, without having the principals sit there, I'll give you exactly what's in the system, so...
Because there will still be some...
There's some, I mean, I mean, we had a kid disenroll today. A special ed child, which, you know, all of a sudden, it was no transportation, no cost to program. He came in unexpectedly, and unexpectedly, he left. So, you know, one of those things that happen.
We'll give you specific numbers after the start of school. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't put on our website, "Or, no, Tom." But it may be stable, at least for this year. Again, next year could be a whole different thing. I'm not, I'm not drawing any conclusions from this, but we were sitting there a couple of weeks ago looking at the numbers, and he said, "I think there's a mistake here with these numbers." I said, "Well, oh, it looks like we picked up some kids," so anyway...
Kindergarten was only showing 48, too. But that was an issue because Marvin, now with the data that goes to the warehouse, also includes the incoming kindergartners who are in the Committee for Preschool Education slot. So there's 12 kids that didn't show up on ours because they're assigned to other schools during the summer. Even if they're getting services at home or anything for speech or anything like that, they don't show up till September 1st. So at first, I'm starting to panic. We only got 48. Look how many more kids are in those slots.
Let us suspense, Joe, watching these numbers.
There you are. What's going on here?
Steve, you had a question.
I was just curious, given our long-range planning, one of the goals is kind of how to, what we're going to be known for and how we're going to communicate that out. It'd be interesting if we can poll these parents, if they're new to the district, what brought them here?
Let's do it.
Oh, yeah, you missed our long range.
You missed our committee.
Yeah, supposed to polling the outgoing, poll the incoming. You know, what drew you to the district?
So I know I was talking to, I can't even think of it right off the top of my head, the art of building guy, James, and he was saying that he's sold houses to people that are telecommuting that are coming here. So, you know, they might be some of those kids.
Well, that's great news. That's good news. Any other old business?
No, those are the two that I have.
Okay, seeing that we have no public, we'll move on without any more public comment. Other?
I have one. In front of you is the latest version of the board committee meeting schedule. I appreciate all of you getting back to me. And a couple of days ago, I had a gentleman get back to me regarding the March Facilities Committee meeting. So fortunately, it was, there was an open Thursday, so I moved that around. So this is the latest and the greatest. If those of you on the Facilities Committee would just check when you go home to make sure 3:22 works for you, it's the fourth Thursday, not the third Thursday, and let me know, then I think, knock on wood, we're good to go. I can have Whitney put it up on the website. I will remind everybody, especially our two new board members, that these dates will change. I mean, stuff, no, seriously, stuff will come up for you individually, in my schedule, in other people's schedules, so it will not look like this at the end of the year. But it's, at least, we start by everybody saying, "Yeah, right now, I can make it. And if we have to change, we change. And if we have to cancel, we cancel." I mean, we got to do what we got to do. But I'd like to get to the point where at least, for one brief moment in time, we all say, "Yeah, those dates are fine for me." And then we'll take it from there. So if Facilities Committee could just check and drop me an email tomorrow morning so we could finalize that.
Diane?
Not exactly on this, but it is committee-related. Speaking of that, long-range planning for Thursday, would anybody be willing to meet a little earlier?
Oh, yeah. Finish earlier? 7:30 and earlier?
Yes.
That's good for me.
They did change the first soccer game from the evening to the morning, so I'd like to scoot over there if possible.
That's this Thursday, right?
So if it doesn't work, it's fine.
This Thursday?
Yes, this Thursday. Because we don't have anyone coming to our meeting, so if it's not fun, I can do it. I just have to get out and find plans a bit earlier.
So it sounds like... Yeah. Starting 7:30 instead of 8:00.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your efforts to coordinate us, Joe.
It's my therapy.
Any other other? Were we going to talk about open house?
Yeah, so I was going to talk about open house. As Deirdre was mentioning earlier, we typically have, well, we have four open houses. We ask for a board member to represent the board at each of those. Typically, the board member mentions the board goals when we meet. It's brief. The building principals have a lot to jam in their open house time, so they really don't want you speaking for 20 minutes or a half an hour. I mean, they would really prefer you to keep it to about five minutes. But I think we've found over the years that it's good for the board to be there, to be represented, to let people connect the face with that monolithic Board of Education, and to reach out and let people know what we're about. So if you would let me know if you can make one of those now. If I were really on top of my game, I'd have those dates here in front of me.
They're on the district calendar, actually, already.
Well, I have them here, actually.
I couldn't get them today. I couldn't get the calendar to come up today.
I got them, because there's one change already. So you could jot these down if you care to. The Chancellor K-2 open house is on Wednesday, September 13. Middle school open house is on Thursday, September 14. High school open house is on Thursday, September 28. The CLS 3 to 5 open house is going to be changed. We mistakenly scheduled it for Wednesday, the 20th, which is Russia China starts at sundown that night. So we're moving it. It will either be on the 18th or the 19th, and I should know from Brett by tomorrow which of those two dates. So it'll be one of the two. The two Chancellor ones start at 7:00 p.m. The middle school and the high school ones start at 6:30 p.m. So let me know if you're available and interested in representing the board, and we'll fill out those four slots, hopefully with four of you, so nobody has to do more than one. So that's the open house schedule.
Thank you. Any other other? Okay, sounds like we're ready to move on to our action items.
Sounds good.
Before we begin, would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those, oh, discussion. All those in favor? We're all in favor. Motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the three-year probationary appointment of Kelly Lynch to the position of Special Education Teacher, assigned to the Chancellor Livingston Elementary School effective September 1st, 2017, in the tenure area of Special Education at a salary of Step III MA plus 6, $62,953, in accordance with the RTA salary schedule for 2016-17. Second. Discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous, that decision passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional 2017-18 school year fall coaching staff?
We're going to table that for right now. I don't have names to plug in.
All right. Table motion 6.3. Motion 6.4. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve a leave request under the Family and Medical Leave Act from Elizabeth Walker to commence on or about September 5th, 2017, with such leave to be taken as paid medical leave through the period of disability as certified by a physician in writing, to the extent of her accrued sick leave through September 29th, 2017, or thereabouts?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the list of additional substitute teachers and non-instructional substitute personnel for the 2017-18 school year. See attached. Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept a grant award from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation in support of funding for the augmented reality sandbox for use in the Rhinebeck High School Earth Science Program, submitted by Michael Rocco in the amount of $2,500, as stipulated?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
I just would like to point out, I've seen one of these. I don't know if anybody else has. They're really, really cool. It made a huge impression on me. I was like, "That's amazing." So I'm really excited to, like, you can tell in my voice that I'm really excited to see this.
Wonderful.
It's great, hands-on visualization. It's just fantastic. I can't believe we've got one.
And we're going to put in a grant, for a huge one, for the Chancellor kids, and just have to go absolutely nuts.
Everybody's going to want one of these. And also, I have to say that it was really wonderful to read the grant submission, to understand the, kind of, the science behind the device, and to see how it works. And it really is yet another wonderful, generous grant from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation to support learning in our schools, for which we are grateful. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to designate a district delegate and alternate delegate? Do we name them?
Yeah, might as well now. Cat's out of the bag.
A district delegate, Mark Lyschauer, and an alternate delegate, Deirdre Del Bear, to exercise their judgment as necessary to represent the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education in voting on proposed bylaw amendments and resolutions at the 2017 NISBA Convention and Education Expo.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional mentors for the 2017-18 school year?
Second, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Somebody has to motion.
Oh, you can't.
Oh, 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 so moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? I think that is six in favor and one abstention. Fleischauer abstention. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve additional summer 2017 curriculum program and clerical work, see attached?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That is six in favor and one abstention. Fleischauer. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve the permanent civil service appointment of Brendan O'Hara to the position of Microcomputer Technician, with a 26-week probationary period, effective August 30th, 2017.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Those in favor? Okay. It's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to approve